Well, he's your medical doctor, he's your drug addict. I think we have a right to ask him that question.
I just want to...
You want to object, object, but I'm going to ask the question and we expect them to answer.
Well, I'm going to tell you that we have, we're going to introduce an exhibit through the next witness, Mr. Costa, that's going to give you the treatment program, the people living in these buildings.
But you said, he's your expert about drug addiction. And I'm trying to find out what his understanding is.
I have two.
And I'm trying to find out what is his understanding as to what's being done in these four treatment buildings.
Individuals will have a structured program for their living. They'll have the opportunity to attend 12-step meetings throughout the week. They will have the opportunity for treatment providers to come in to provide treatment, lectures, and continuing the connectivity for their ongoing care.
These people can go and come as they please, can't they?
They can go and come as they please. Well, I don't really know how you, how to answer that. They have a certain schedule that they will have to maintain. There will be checks and balances in place. So, no, they don't have the ability to just go and come as they please. They're under the care of clinicians and there is, there will be some restrictions.
How many people, what percent of the people that go through the inpatient program will go to this residential living?
I don't have that information.
You don't know if it's 1%, 10%, 20%?
No, I have not been given that information.
What is the distinction in your medical between the 125-bed and this particular four building? The treatment that's given in the 125-bed compared to what's being given in the 192-bed?
The treatment that's given in the 125-bed is more or less more concentrated. It doesn't allow for the freedom of the patient to move to the next level, integrating their daily activities of living along with recovery. It's not set as strong as providing therapeutic milieu, is allowing patients to take what they're learning in the 125-bed facility into the community.
These patients are not allowed to go and come, is that correct? Once you're checked in?
They say go and come as they please. They will be allowed...
In the 125-bed, in the 125-bed, when they're in there, or they're in there for 30, 60, 90 days, correct? They don't go out to the movies and then come back?
Well, if it's a, if it's a scheduled activity?
Then we'll talk about individual.
There are in all treatment facilities passes that are given, but these passes are monitored by the fact that there is an agenda. Patients usually are assigned to go out to a specific area to engage, and when they come back into the facility, they're screened for any use of drug or alcohol use.
What other inpatient drug treatment facilities are there in, say, the tri-county area? Camden, Burlington, Gloucester County?
Any type?
Inpatient.
Inpatient. We have Seabrook House, which is down in, in Bylin area. We have Lighthouse. We have the program that's down in Williamstown, St. Mary's. We have Princeton House. So, those are a few of the programs that are detox, inpatient residential.
Off the 295, I think it's in Southampton?
Hampton Institute. That's actually a program that's more geared towards patients that have mental health and addiction issues.
Now, this place you said 200 miles, what is that?
200 miles, Marworth in Virginia, or Williamsburg, Virginia. That's a program where we send most of our professionals. It's a program that has inpatient detoxification, residential treatment, and it also has apartment living. That's just adjacent to the facility.
Now, if it's not required of all patients that go through the inpatient to reside in these facilities, correct?
Correct.
Is it more of a convenience for them to be there so they can attend some of these meetings and things?
No. Some patients, as per their assessment, we know are returning to lives that are quite disrupted. They don't have proper living facilities. They may be returning to areas that are high risk for them to relapse, filled with triggers. This allows a transition stage for these patients to identify areas or actually experience overliving.
So, there's no other facility like this in Jersey, correct?
Not that I know of. There was, there was a, there was a facility or program down at Seabrook House called Matrial Program. That was for pregnant females. That was similar to this model, and that program is essentially...
Just one for the follow-up.
I have a question. You mentioned something about a patient with diabetes getting care, and how would that care compare to this residential component of this? You said that they have the ability to get that kind of care where somebody with addiction doesn't have that opportunity?
So, a patient with diabetes comes into my office, blood sugar is off the wall, 600. I send them to the emergency room, which is no more than four, five miles away. They're treated in an emergency room. They're usually sent up to the intensive care unit and to their diabetes is under control.
It's a hospital you're talking about?
Yes, they go to a hospital. And then, if they have any complications of their treatment, they're then stepped down or transitioned to subacute care, which doesn't exist usually in a, an addictions treatment milieu. Members of the community are brought in to surround and help patients who have diabetic problems. Educational resources are available. So, and they're usually located and called to come and provide services within one specific area, a one-stop-shop type of treatment model.
But you're saying that someone that's suffering from addiction does not have the opportunity, if they're at same instance, to go to a hospital and get treatment?
No. They take them to one of the seven or eight places you just mentioned?
No, it's not that easy. A person suffering from addiction usually has to make a phone call, see if their insurance covers it. If they don't cover it, then they have to move on to another treatment milieu. They're usually not readily treated in an emergency room situation, so a patient who is in acute need of care can't just walk into a treatment program and expect to be treated. And there is not the same connectivity of care, calling on doctors within the community to take over the care of the patient. We just don't have that in the addictions community.
Doesn't Kennedy Hospital have a crisis center?
That's for mental health.
Not for drug addiction?
No, no.
Sure. The public will have a chance to speak. Let the board members and the applicants speak first, and you'll have your turn to speak. Thank you.
Just one last follow-up question. So, the four treatment buildings, do you, or the all sorts, you were...
Anyone else have a question?
I have a question for you. 25 years in practice?
Yes.
Could you tell me what the rate of failure is with treatment, especially first-time treatment?
Depends on what, what type of treatment you go into. The recidivism rate or the relapse rate is for treatment within, let's say a patient goes into detox, short-term residential, and then discharge. Their relapse rate is about 65 to 70%.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
You're saying that this facility, will it be covered by people's health insurance?
Yes.
The, now, I'm not talking about the inpatient, I'm talking about the residential portion.
Yes.
Under what program of the...
Well, when you, when you make application to an insurance company, you present the services and levels of care that you're going to offer, and the insurance company approve a certain rate for providing that level of care.
And they will, they will provide the 120 days, and then after the 120 days, they'll provide the rental cost for these apartments and these...
Objection, objection. That is not, the word apartment, this is not an apartment. No one has said apartment.
What is it called?
It's called a residential treatment building. And it's called a treatment center.
A residence, then?
It's not a residence. It's a treatment building. We said before, and we're going to get to it, these people do not have leases, they're patients, and it's...
But they aren't living at the facility?
They're residing at the facility, absolutely. But it's not an apartment. I mean, I don't know why people use the term apartment. It's not an apartment. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't get inspected by the DCA and get a green card. It's not covered under hotel mobiles. It's a part of this facility. And I just want to say one thing. I feel like the way we're cross-examining our witnesses, one of the things I'm entitled to, and you can vote yes or no on this, I don't care how you vote, but the bottom line is I'm entitled to a fair, fair and impartial hearing. Your judge is up here. And by the, by the type of cross-examination, I'm feeling like you're, you're an objector or an adversary. And this shouldn't be adversarial. You're entitled to ask questions. But what I, what I feel is happening here is I feel it's protectional, and I feel what you're doing is you're cross-examining my witnesses as if you're objecting to this project. Any question is fine, but to challenge Dr. DeShields on some of the ways these things are being challenged, I would say is inappropriate.
He's your expert. You presented him as an expert. We have a right to ask him questions.
Absolutely.
And I believe that's what we are doing.
Okay.
In fact, you may not like the question.
With all due respect, I say that.
That's something else. But we have a right to ask him.
You have a right to ask questions, but I'm entitled to a fair and impartial hearing. And I'm saying I can't do that.
Well, I've gotten that, and over the years, I think we've been nothing but fair and impartial in all the hearings.
Well, we'll see.
This isn't the first rodeo. You've been here many times.
I have.
And I think we've always been fair. So, note it.
Anyone else? Any questions?
A drug addict who has a wall gets treated at the main facility, goes back and gets treated in between eight days in a treatment center. What happens if the insurance company will cover that? And their parents or whatever care for them, what happens to that person?
That's where you have case management. And according to plans that I've been shown, there will be intense case management provided. Not unlike what you see in hospitals, where people can't afford levels of care at certain, can't afford or have cutoffs due to the fact that insurance companies just refuse to pay. So, people will, social workers will get on the phone, clinicians, as myself, will get on the phone, and we will advocate for patients. We'll also, you know, work and see what other ways we can find for funding. And with all, with this treatment program, I can only assume that there will be instances where individuals really need the care, there will be free care provided.
Free care provided at this facility?
Yes.
You say you have advocates working for people whose insurance won't pay. Suppose that whole 192 beds were people that couldn't pay?
They're still not going to get treated.
I can't answer that. It's just, you know, we, we treat one patient at a time.
Disability, I just want to ask about that. We define these people as disabled, like maybe a war veteran, no legs, no arms, just like... You wouldn't exactly classify this disability as these other disabled people. This disability hasn't, erodes and works for you, am I correct? It can see the light at the end of the tunnel.
For some individuals, and there are other individuals that suffer from such devastation from their disease, i.e. alcoholics with chronic, psychotic livers who are truly medically disabled. So, we're talking about disability within the framework of medical conditions. And yes, you're correct. There are individuals that I treat that are in remission, are able to go back to work, and they do not qualify for disability. So, everyone who walks in my office and, you know, wants to make a claim for being disabled, I say, no. You're doing well, you're taking your medications, you're showing progress, you don't, you don't qualify for disability. If you relapse and there are other circumstances, yeah, you may apply for first-term, midterm, long-term, or even life-term, lifetime disability. But that's a ongoing assessment process.
I do understand we're here asking you questions, not verbally lashing out at you.
I don't feel that way.
We have a duty to the public.
I don't feel, I don't, I don't feel attacked.
Thank you. We respect you.
Anyone else? Get to the new counsel.
Thank you. Just two further questions. So, I think you indicated in response to one of the board members' questions that the relapse rate was relatively high at the first level of treatment, when you just go to a facility and get released, is that correct?
Correct.
When we look at this facility that has this continuum of care, that has the more restrictive and then transitioning to the less restrictive type of treatment, do you have any opinion about how the relapse rate would be impacted by a facility like this?
Well, research has shown the longer-term patient is in contact with the treatment, and the number of treatment episodes that they have, the higher rate of ongoing recovery, thus the lower rate of relapse.
And one final question. The four treatment buildings, that type of treatment exists today. I think, the question is, does it, it just doesn't exist in one location, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
The four types of treatment with people living in this less restrictive type of care, that type of treatment does exist today in other locations, is that correct?
Yes.
But it's just that what's unique a little bit about this facility is it's all obtained in one integrated campus.
Exactly. And, you know, that type of treatment has been, in my experience, reserved for those that have pretty high entrants.
Thank you. Go for a question.
Yes, go ahead.
This is a simple one. You talked about the one in Williamsburg, Virginia.
Yes.
Okay, could you cite where there's one across from college? You said that it was stated that there are similar facilities close to universities?
Oh, no, Rutgers University has started a treatment, drug and alcohol treatment program within the college itself, so it becomes part of the student health program. So, it's, it's integrating drug and alcohol treatment within the student health program. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to misclassify that.
I'm just trying to get information because I'm taking my notes down, that's all. So, what you're saying is they're treating the actual students, they're not teaching, they're not treating people from abroad?
They're treating actual students. They're integrating it into their overall treatment for all types of... And this was in response to binge drinking on campus and drug and alcohol use on campus, and patients actually had to leave school and get treatment somewhere else before returning back to school. Now, individuals are being able to be treated right here on campus.
Place in Williamsburg, Virginia, what type of an area is that in Williamsburg, Virginia?
Currently is a suburban rural tech over area. Not too much different from what we have here in Blackwood. It has residential, it has residences within, you know, two or three miles of the facility.
One other quick question, Doctor. You said the longer the treatment, the better the success rate.
Yes.
Why wouldn't it be better to leave the person in the hospital setting for 120 days or 180 days, a more restrictive, more intensive care? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't that be better in putting them in this residential component?
Full sense of security. People have to get on with their lives, and they have to face their demons, so to speak. So, having them, working with them in transition and showing them how they can make better, better decisions, putting them in environments in which they're actually able, once their brain is getting healthier, to make better decisions, is much more effective than to just keep them closed in where they feel like, okay, well, I've been clean for this 60, 30, 60, 90 days. They go out into their own communities, get stressors, and fall apart.
What about all the people who don't go to this residential component?
Well, again...
The rate is 10%. I heard somewhere that maybe 10% of the inpatients would go to this building. What happens to the other 90%?
Well, those individuals may not need this level of care. Again, it's all done through constant assessment and reassessment. So, a patient that's going back to a home that is supportive of their treatment, that is conducive to their ongoing recovery and treatment, they don't need to be in a residential overliving environment. But there are those individuals who are not returning. They're, they're returning to households that are in total chaos, or they're returning to situations in which they've been, you know, they're feeling very shameful about, and there are a lot of issues in relationship. So, they need this type of living environment where they can learn how to address their problems and, and effectively...
Continue.
Thank you, Doctor. Doctor Bruce?
Good.
How are you doing?
Good, thanks.
You were previously smart, correct?
Yes, I was.
And would you tell us what your position is with the applicant?
Yeah, I'm the chief clinical officer for Recovery Centers of America, so I'm the person who designs, develops, directs, and implements and trains on the treatment services that we deliver in all of our care. I'm also adjunct clinical professor at the University of Pennsylvania for the past 20 years.
And what type of degrees and so forth do you have?
So, I got my PhD in medical school at Donovan University, and my PhD is in clinical psychology. The nine years where I was getting my degree, I worked in all different types of treatment, residential outpatient and whatnot. I'm a person of long-term recovery who went back to school in order to get educated to work in this field. I, when I finished my PhD, I did my internship at Hopkins, I did a postdoctoral NIH-funded fellowship at Penn, and then I had about an 18-year career as a clinical researcher doing health services research. So, I developed different evidence-based practices, tested them in treatment programs across the country. My view from that is a very large kind of national view, and actually somewhat of an international view. I've developed treatment systems for Egypt, Nigeria, Singapore, Thailand, Taiwan, China, Iraq, Iran. And so, I've done a lot of work and consulted for the White House as well as for the UN. And that was a long history of getting NIH, UNODC, UN, White House grants to develop evidence-based practices. From there, I went and I took a three-year contract for Phoenix House, which has 120 treatment programs in the country that were very paraprofessional, and I turned them, transitioned them into evidence-based practices with electronic health records. And then I went to the largest for-profit, which was called CRC, 140 programs, did the same thing. And in December or November of 2014, came on board with Recovery Centers of America. I'm a pub post blogger, I have a couple hundred publications, I'm a keynote presenter. I taught the actors on The Wolf of Wall Street how to act under coeludes for the scene in The Wolf of Wall Street, so I have a pretty diverse experience.
I'm going to show you what marked as, pre-marked as exhibit A1. Do you identify A1 for the record?
So, this is, this is my CV. It talks about my positions, different things, doesn't...
And you gave a brief summary of all your qualifications, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to offer exhibit A1 and the evidence as the doctor's reasons for qualifications, Mr. Costa.
Okay.
Go on. Now, you're familiar with the plans that we're going to testify about this exhibit, correct?
I am, yes.
Okay, you helped, you probably helped design them.
That's my job. I design what happens in our clinical care, how we deliver it, how we make sure we do it with fidelity, how we measure the success rates.
And you're familiar with what happens in the more intensive treatment that we've been calling the 125-bed, let's call it the detox center or a hospital or whatever you want to call it. You're familiar with that operation, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and what we're here to talk about, because the board's already said that that as well as the outpatient building are all permitted, and there's no issues with respect to them, but what we're really here to focus on tonight is the four treatment buildings, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and one of the questions that was asked of Dr. DeShields was, what really goes on in those buildings? And he gave an answer, but you also have a sense of, of what goes on in those buildings pretty well, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and would you describe what you see as the treatment that these patients are going to be going under in the four, undergoing in the four treatment buildings?
Yeah, so, in those four treatment buildings, it's a slightly decreased level of structure. So, and let me just step back a little bit about some of the other questions you asked with regard to the research. So, the research shows that if somebody comes in and gets detox only, and then that's their treatment, that the effectiveness of detox alone is best measured in hours, not days or weeks or months, that at least 90, 98% of people who just get that will relapse within a month. If they then go on to get this intensive inpatient care, residential inpatient care, which is very structured, people are in treatment from 8:00 AM till, till 10:00 at night, they are in a number of different services that they get across the day, medical, psychiatric, substance abuse, that their chances of staying well increase a little bit. If they then continue on to a lower level of care, but still a very structured environment where they can practice relapse prevention techniques, where they can practice what we call self-soothing, the ability to take care of themselves when they have cravings in a really structured and supportive environment, then their, their chances go up. So, all of the literature, all of the research shows that more treatment is better. Now, some patients could come in, and they could have what we call relatively short drug use careers, is actually the expression for that. And they may be able to be served by just outpatient treatment, and that's okay. The majority of treatment in the country is outpatient. But most patients that we see, because we tend to only see the top of that pyramid of all the patients in the country, all the people with substance use disorders, we tend to treat just that top, you know, 1%, 2% of people who have the most acute disorders. Those folks will not do well if they just get a detox or a three or four-week stay. They do better longer, and then they do even better if they continue after that with outpatient. So, the, the people that are in those sort of buildings, the way I've designed care and the way I will implement it, the way RCA will implement it across the board, they cannot come and go as they please. They, they could achieve a pass where they could go out, you know, for dinner with their family, but this is not, you know, I'll see you in eight hours, I'm going to take the day off kind of thing. They're in treatment all day, every day. So, the services that will go on there, the idea would be they probably need less, a little less psychiatric care, maybe less medical care, but we want to have that available for them, and they can do with a little less structure. So, you have much more of a community of people holding each other accountable as well, in addition to a good amount of structure, but not as much as you have in the 125. And given my brothers, everybody who goes into the intense inpatient, the 125, everybody that could benefit from it will go over into the longer care. There's two things we know. One is longer is better. Number two is that the most successful treatment in this country is the treatment delivered to pilots, physicians, docs. It's a five-year treatment program. We can't get that. There's, you know, that's just a goal that, you know, would be pretty unattainable, but we're designing a one-year treatment program that would include all of these components that people need, including trailing off to intensive outpatient, where they go back and live at home and have intensive outpatient, and then just outpatient. And there's a lot of literature, and I have a couple of articles that I gave that talk about just the benefit of even telephone monitoring after the person's had a good section of care and been through different levels.
So, as far as the operation, I'm going to show you exhibit A2, which is a schedule of the kind of treatment that these patients are going to encounter in the four treatment buildings, is that correct?
Right, yes.
And would you briefly, you know, go through the schedule, we're going to hear, obviously there is some evidence, but what are some of the things that occur?
Yeah, so, some of the things that occur during the schedule would be seminars and workshops. So, there are a number of evidence-based practices, mapping-based counseling. So, one of these is managing your anger, and there's workshops on managing your anger. We're actually also going to have, which is pretty unique, workshops on leadership skills, whether it's Strength Finders, Napoleon Hill, Dale Carnegie stuff, because people really need, you can't get sober and drug-free if you don't have anything to live for. You know, you can't just give it up and not feel better. So, these are things that, that folks need. They'll have primary group, the ratio of counselor-patient primary group is one to eight. They'll be in a primary group five days a week, and they'll have that, as well as specialty groups. So, we will have LGBT groups, we will have older adult, young adult, men's group, women's group, trauma group, okay? They will also see individually psychiatrists, nutritionists, their primary therapists will see them individually twice a week. They will also have relapse prevention, they will have very clear evidence-based 12-step recovery support services, not just meetings, but actually a multimedia toolkit for 12-step support, how to get a sponsor, how to find a home group, as well as all different meetings, whether that's going to be Alcoholics Anonymous, Cocaine Anonymous, Narcotics Anonymous, things like that. We expect that about 70% of our patients will be young adults, or what we... We expect that about 70% of our patients will be young adults or what we, the research will call emerging adults. You're, you're 18 to 29-year-olds. There's other things that they need to be successful once they're in recovery too, that they don't have that they never had. So, we will have workshops for them if they need it on how to do a budget.